Thank you so much for the staff's forum. Visitors will retire behind the rail. We will get started. To give our invocation today, the chair recognizes Pastor Darrell Bradsbury of Second Baptist Church of Frankfurt. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
I want to thank the President, Councilwoman Sanchez, and you for allowing me to be here. This is a historical time in our world and our nation. And if it's any time that we should gather together and embrace each other and support each other, it's now. But the best way to do that is through prayer. So let us pray. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be able to gather here. We thank you for these leaders that have taken part in this session. We ask that you would bless them as they go through the different topics that they need to discuss. And we pray, Lord, that you would bless this nation, allow us to come together and to be one, united as we say we are. Go with this session, not only this time, but even in the sessions to come. It is in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Appreciate it. Council, be at ease. The next order of business is approval of the journal of the meeting of Thursday, November 3rd, 2016. And the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the journal of the meeting of Thursday, November 3rd, 2016 be approved.
May it be second? Thank you. It has been moved to probably second, that the journal of the meeting of Thursday, November 3rd, 2016 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested with Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted. And the chair now recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the minority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember O'Neal.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome everyone who has come down to witness their government in action today. We really appreciate you coming down. We hope that your stay here today is not only a pleasurable one, but a knowledgeable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here today. This time, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who presented a resolution recognizing the Guardian Civic League. Would Rochelle Bilal and those accompanying her please join the councilmen at the podium? Hey, Rochelle, how you doing? And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Johnson, Councilman O., and Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez, and Councilman Toltenberger, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilwoman Gill, and Councilman Don.
It is an honor to stand here today on behalf of the 60th anniversary of the Guardian Civic League. Give them a round of applause, please. The members of the Guardian Civic League had tirelessly dedicated themselves to improvement of all communities in which they live. They are always on duty. They're never off duty. I have spoken to some of the young people that you have at your summer camp, changing the paradigm of how young people perceive law enforcement in the city and around the nation. They have been engaged in public affairs, going back in my recollection from a guy by the name of Alfonso Deal, who dealt with the whole issue of Delbert Africa and how he was treated, and spoke up at a time when it wasn't convenient to speak up. It was a bold statement to speak up against injustices. So Black Lives Matter didn't just happen now, it happened then, and we appreciate that input. The founder, Alfonso Deal, and to current President Rochelle Bilal, they have continued that legacy of service for 60 years. And most recently, when all of the issues of Philadelphia election corruption came up, they stepped up. They went out into the community, went out into different sections of town to regulate how and enforce how fair elections are conducted. I think there's a job description now formed that they have done it so well. In controversial elections, sometimes, we can get a little feisty. We can get a little rambunctious. People are passionate about who will represent them in public office. But no matter how rambunctious or emotional or personal it gets, there are rules that we follow. And they're the blacks in blue, the blacks in blue that enforce those rules, and we appreciate them. One of the authors, and I use that term blacks in blue, is a book that was put out and talked about how their sojourn in this city, City of Philadelphia and brotherly love. At first, wasn't much love for the brothers, all right, until 1881, when the first African-American police officer was sworn in in the City of Philadelphia. And since that time, they have had that charge of fidelity, integrity, and law enforcement in our town. Every year, I'm proud to go up and talk to the rookies. Rochelle Bilal brings us up all the way up to the training center, where we indoctrinate the young officers that walk these streets. First thing that we tell them is that they are part of the community, they are not an occupying force. They're one of us, they're our neighbors. And that there is a delicate balance between having someone who is having a bad day and dealing with a bad person. And it is their charge through training and understanding to know the difference. And we appreciate them today and are glad that they are around for 60 years, and may they be around for 60 more. So, here we go. So it's my charge to present this resolution recognizing and honoring the Guardian Civic League for their 60 years of service to, as police officers, and its commitment to fostering relations with law enforcement officers and the community they provide service to. Whereas the Guardian Civic League, local chapter of the National Black Police Association, was founded in 1956 with a mission of fostering relationships with members of the Philadelphia Police Department and the communities in which they serve. And...
Whereas the Guardian Civic League's founder and first president was Police Officer Alfonso Deal. I note that he used to call me the 18th City Councilperson, so I wasn't always here. I worked for Lucian in those days. Past presidents of the organization include Harold Arnold, James Holly, Harold James, John Green, Jimmy Gueye, Ronald Oliver, William E. Blackman, David E. Fisher, William Don Rogers, James Walker, Willie L. Williams III, and Catherine D. McNeil-Battle. The organization's current president, Rochelle Bilal, is the second and longest-standing female president since the organization's existence. And...
Whereas, since its inception, the Guardian Civic League has spoken out on many important matters that affect the lives of all Philadelphians, as well as accomplished several significant milestones. And...
Just wanted to say, as an aside, speaking truth to power has never been more important in these times, and I especially want to acknowledge the Guardian Civic League for using its positions to speak truth to power on issues that are deeply meaningful to all of us. Whereas, in 1972, the Guardian Civic League and 12 other black police organizations from around this country met in St. Louis, Missouri, and formed the National Black Police Association.
Whereas, the National Black Police Association has grown to have a membership in excess of 30,000 police officers. In 2010, the Guardian Civic League hosted the Eastern Region Conference of the National Black Police Association in Philadelphia. In 2012, the Guardian Civic League also hosted the National Conference for the National Black Police Association. And...
And we also would like to thank the Guardian Civic League for stepping up to the plate and denouncing the endorsement of Donald Trump, serving as President-elect of these United States, and the endorsement, and his endorsement by the local Philadelphia FOP. Whereas, over the years, the Guardian Civic League has developed and implemented various programs throughout the city of Philadelphia which are benefiting most Philadelphians. Some of these efforts have included the creations of summer enrichment programs which develop jobs for youth in the community, as well as their Stair Straight program, which teaches the new recruits critical skills for maintaining a positive career as a police officer.
Whereas, the organization also hosts the La Faire basketball tournament in honor of the first African-American female police officer killed in the line of duty, as well as an annual family and friends cookout, where book bags and school supplies are provided to students returning to school. And...
Whereas, the Guardian Civic League has shown its continued dedication to improving the moral, civic, and social well-being of the community by ensuring accountability of police officers and community members, upward mobility for law enforcement officers, and fair and equal treatment for all. Now therefore, be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that hereby recognizes and honors the Guardian Civic League for its 60 years of service to police officers and its commitment to fostering relationships with law enforcement officers and the communities they protect and serve. Further resolved that in gross copy of the resolution be presented to the Guardian Civic League of Philadelphia, further evidencing the sincere admiration and gratitude of this legislative body.
Just as a matter of record, the headquarters is located in the 5th Councilmatic District.
That's right. Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Ms. Bilal for remarks.
Thank you. President, in the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful. Thank you, Council President Darrell Clark, and all the council members here today. I think Alfonso Deal and those who thought about forming the Guardian Civic League is shining down on this council today, and we really do appreciate it. I want to also thank the executive committee that stands here today for working with me these nine years. And they call me the taskmaster, but I just want to get it done, and they do get it done. I need to get, I need to let you know them by name, because this is the group, this is our future leaders of the Guardian Civic League, and I need you to recognize them by name. My right-hand person, my executive vice president, Detective Crystal Williams. Some of them are not here today because they're active, so they're on patrol. My VP of Programs is Sergeant Robert Billups. My VP of Community Affairs is Michael Kennedy. My VP of Membership is Detective Laura Hammond. My treasurer, Sergeant Sean Butts. My financial secretary, Police Officer Doreen Napper. My records and correspondence secretary, Police Officer Andrea Justice. My chaplain, Sergeant Denise Wood. My partner, Mataria, stands here with me today, and he's retired inspector?
Chief.
Chief Inspector, Arthur Matthews. And let me not forget our excellent assistant, executive assistant, who will call you at all times and answers that phone at the Guardian Civic League, Elaine Thomas. Our photographer, who's standing out there, sometimes he acts like the Sergeant of Arms, his name is Isaac Carlton. Community relations person, Vera Milling. And our executive, economic development person, retired Sergeant Jihad Ali, who stands here today with us. The Guardian Civic League stands on the shoulders of strong men and women who in 1956 helped form this organization for the betterment of our membership and the communities that we serve. Our first president took a lot of heat for standing up against a system that today still treats people of color unfairly. Though we have had some ups and downs, we are still relevant and still standing strong. On our desk, on your desk, is our pamphlet that outlines the programs that we do for our members and the community. I'm not going to read all of them but out loud today, but I ask that you read them so that you know the things that we continue to do from the Guardian Civic League. I just want to outline a few that is important to me and to our hearts. Our summer enrichment program. We raise the funds to keep young people motivated, safe during the summer. We do two things with our program. One, to help seven-year-olds to the age of 13-year-olds engage in reading, math, science, and art. They still have fun, so we still take them on trips and they go swimming. So it's not just all work, it's, we work together in reference to that. The other part we do in the program is to help young teenagers who act as our junior counselors and our college students as our senior counselors, become job-ready, teaching them to follow the rules, time management, and professionalism. So when I say we raise the funds, you know I'm going, I'm going to put my hand out. I'm just saying, we are now raising funds for 2017 Summer Enrichment Camp, and all donations are much appreciated. Our one-day boot camp, which takes young, young people from the streets to the district to Temple Hospital and then to the prison. We want them to see that getting into the system is not like a TV show. Finally, our Loretta Verrit Memorial Event held at the Boys and Girls Club named after her. Loretta Verrit is the first female officer killed in the line of duty in 1996. She was a member of ours. In January of 2017, we will have a two-day event at the Loretta Verrit Boys and Girls Club, 4700 Whittaker Avenue. The first day starts Saturday, which will have two parts. The morning workshop will be conflict resolutions for young people and anti-bullying. The second part of that day will be a basketball clinic. Day two of the, of that event would have a appropriate age basketball game, means all ages, different categories, and that will be a ticket event. The money raised from that goes directly to the Loretta Verrit Boys and Girls Clubs. So at this point, we would like to honor some of our friends who constantly reach out to us, and we do appreciate it. Now, we, we put gifts on your desk because we want to let you know we appreciate all of you. So this is not to slight anybody. This is for the ones that constantly reach out to us and ask us what we need to continue to do. So we need to honor three people. We today are making you an honorary member of the Guardian Civic League. We have one for Councilwoman Janie Blackwell. We have one for Councilman Curtis Jones. And we have one for Councilman David O. We want to thank those of you who bought tickets and took ads out in our 60th Anniversary Ad Journal. Your support goes towards us giving out our scholarships to young people trying to get a higher education. And on this final note, as I finish up, our organization's been in 1,500 blocks of Girard Avenue since 1972. And you know that area is gentrified and there are condominiums coming up all over the place. There's only two organizations left there. One is the church that's next door to us, the second is us. And we want to stay there as long as we can and battle to keep doing what we do. We thank you for all that you do, we appreciate this honor, and we got blessed, may God bless you to continue to do the work.
Council, be at ease. Okay. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass, who will present a resolution honoring Greta Greenberger. Would Greta Greenberger, of those accompanying her, please join the councilwoman at the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Squiller, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, Councilman Johnson?
I don't know if I, I think, I got somebody working.
Councilman Toltenberger, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds-Graham?
So we're here recognizing Greta Greenberger for all of her hard work and, and her preparation for retirement, or actually, her actual retirement, after 25 years of service to the City of Philadelphia. And you know, I have a funny story about how I first met Greta. We actually were neighbors. I didn't realize she was my neighbor until I walked around, I was actually in, in campaign mode, this was many, many years ago. And she didn't know me from a can of paint, and I knocked on her door, and she invited me in her home. She invited me in, she gave me a glass of iced tea, I think it was, and then she grilled me. And then I was sweating so bad, I needed another glass of iced tea. But that's the person that she is. She is warm and welcoming and tough all at the same time, and I really appreciate those qualities in you. You've been a tremendous asset to the City of Philadelphia. You know, there's nobody like Greta. We're really going to miss all of the hard work that you do around here in this building, and we just really wanted to celebrate you today. And so we have a resolution which reads, "Honoring Greta Greenberger on her retirement after 25 years as tour director of City Hall and recognizing her dedication to the promotion and preservation of the history, heritage, and beauty of the city."
Whereas, for the past 25 years, Greta Greenberger has been the public face of City Hall to visiting tourists, and I know that personally because I've sent many there. She has been on her job through five mayoral administrations and has become an expert on all matters of the building, its workings, its occupants, as anyone in the city. She has been the curator for the building, working with City Hall Art Program, public property, on issues of preservation, maintenance, and even the portraits of former mayors.
At one moment, she is lovingly communicating the amazing story of the building, and within the same day, commit organizing to have a missing part of the bronze chandelier in the mayor's reception room replaced. With money she personally raised, she has become a dogged defender of the advocate for the building and the city's obligation to the visiting public, and has seamlessly blended that visitation with the day-to-day workings of city government. And...
We want to thank our husband too for his service to the city. Thank you. Whereas, Greta Greenberger was the, was trained as an arts educator originally at the Tyler School of Art at Temple University, eventually getting her degree from the Massachusetts College of Art in Boston, where she grew up. She became a high school art teacher in Portland, Maine, where she taught for 10 years. In 1979, she was offered a position with the national program based in Philadelphia. In 1979, she was offered a position with the National Program based in Philadelphia called Architecture in Schools, and moved here with her five-year-old daughter Erica during that summer, and... Whereas, as a colleague of hers in Architecture in Schools, happened to be an architect who graduated from Rensler with Greta's eventual husband Alan Greenberger. They all met on the street by chance, how romantic, near 23rd and Walnut. In 1981, Greta and Alan married and had a daughter Julia in 1984. Greta left her job with Architecture in Schools to become the chief exhibit designer at the Please Touch Museum, where she oversaw the museums moved to 21st Street. That was monumental. After the birth of her second daughter, the Greenbergers' family moved to Australia, where Alan's firm was designing the new Australian Parliament House, and...
Whereas, the family returned in 1985, and Greta took a job with the Foundation for Architecture, where she co-managed their program, Architecture and Education. Eventually, she took on the leadership of the Foundation's Architectural Tour Program, which provided extensive public tours throughout the city, as well as training to volunteer guides. In 1991, the Foundation was invited by then-Mayor Wilson Good to run the Tower Program of City Hall. Greta was the natural person to lead this program and turn her attention to City Hall and its extraordinary architectural and social history. With the election of Mayor Ed Rendell, those responsibilities grew into a full-fledged program involving public tours inside and outside the building, as well as to the observation level beneath the Statue of William Penn, and...
Whereas, and all the while, she has never actually been an employee of the city of Philadelphia. She started this program with the Foundation for Architecture. When it closed its operations, she carried on as the sole proprietor of her own business on contract to the city, and eventually as an employee of the Independence Visitor Center, who currently contract with the city to manage the operation. The program, the visitor center, the volunteers who have served all these years, and the extraordinary hospitality offered every day are Greta's legacy and gift to her adopted city. Now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that hereby honors Greta Greenberg on her retirement after 25 years as a tour director of City Hall, the building she loves, 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 and recognizes her dedication to the promotion and preservation of the history, heritage, and beauty of the city of Philadelphia. And let's celebrate them, but before we do, I also, as Councilwoman Blackwell mentioned, wanted to give a special acknowledgement to Alan Greenberger, who for many years led the city's Commerce Department. And when you think about Philadelphia, there is no couple, I think, that really epitomizes Philadelphia more than the Greenbergers, so let's really give them a round of applause. Congratulations.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Mrs. Greenberg.
Wow. I usually don't use microphones in this room. I want to thank the council for this wonderful recognition, and I can only say what has been said. I love my years here at City Hall. Matter of fact, I'm going to continue to come in and help out from time to time, so don't be surprised if you see me leading a tour. But this has been an amazing experience for me, to spend my days sharing this incredible building, its history, William Penn, our founder, and his history, and certainly how our city government functions. So I want to personally thank each of the council members who have been there to support our program, have reached out to our program and to me to help welcome their visitors, and I hope that will continue with the tour program. We are here as ambassadors of the city and are more than happy to be of assistance to all the council members and all of the visitors today. I could not have done what I've done if it weren't for the incredible volunteers who over the 25 years have probably numbered over 50 people, who have come, some for like 10, 15 years, giving their personal time to be here in the visitor center, to give out information to visitors, to welcome people, and to arrange for people to take tours. The tour program is more than just going to the tower, and yet that is an extraordinary experience we hope everybody will do. I do have some of the volunteers with me here. I want to thank Elaine Morris, who will continue to give tours, and is a phenomenal person by herself and with the program. And did Heather come up here? Back here is Heather Murphy, who will now be the leader of the tour program. And so reach out to Heather to continue sharing this amazing building with people. And we have visitors from all over the world, all ages, all backgrounds, all religions. It's really phenomenal, the thousands upon thousands of people that we have shared this building with. So I want to thank all of you and thank my husband, who has been there and has been Many of you have worked with him, and we do love Philadelphia. And I love this recognition also because I think it comes with a written printed proclamation. And some of you may have seen, it has a wonderful painting done by Noel Miles, who is a good friend of mine, who we arranged to donate his painting to the council. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilor Biddy's.
Thank you. Congratulations. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Thank you. And Mr. Decker, would you please read those communications?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on November 16, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on October 27, 2016. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution confirming the reappointment of Brian J. McCormick as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in a term ending November 16, 2021. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 2476 Jasper Street and 2478 Jasper Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Philadelphia redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 1467 North 53rd Street. And a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3210 through 12, 3211 through 19, 3216, 3220 through 26, 3223 through 37, 3230, and 3236 Arlington Street, 3225 through 27 West Burke Street, 3233 through 37 West Burke Street, 3210 through 14, 3217, 3220, 3223 through 25, 3224, 3228, 3229, 3232 through 34, and 3233 through 37 Monument Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 2511 Survivor Street. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank. And an ordinance amending multiple sections of the Philadelphia Code to remove provisions for and references to life partners and life partnerships. And an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees' Retirement Code to create a new plan entitled Plan 16 for certain employees to expand the scope of DC Plan to cover additional employees, to change contribution rates for certain employees, to amend various provisions relating to the Deferred Retirement Option Plan, and to make technical amendments. And an ordinance amending Section 3B of an ordinance approved March 1, 1963, as amended relating to agreements to administer employee retirement benefits for certain quasi-public agencies. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2017 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund, the Water Department, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, and to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the County Fuels Tax Fund, the Special Gasoline Tax Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 from the General Fund, from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes. And an ordinance constituting the 15th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes in the city of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Those messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
Today, this morning, I have two privileged resolutions, one on your behalf and one bill also on your behalf, Mr. President. The resolutions were cosponsored by Councilmembers Toltenberger, Parker, and Blackwell.
Thank you, Councilwoman. An ordinance amending Chapter 17, 1600, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans by adding requirements when exemptions to economic opportunity plans are sought and granted.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on its 90th anniversary and celebrating the Omega Chapter's histories, accomplishments, and ongoing commitment of service to all mankind.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Commerce and Economic Development at Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings to consider and make recommendations on how the city of Philadelphia should prepare to host America's 250th anniversary in 2026.
Today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce three bills, one on your behalf, and one non-privileged resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania to construct on and maintain a building encroachment at 1 Convention Avenue.
Bill will refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania to construct on and maintain a sign encroachment at 3220 through 60 South Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance constituting the 15th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one more series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Philadelphia redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 1467 North 53rd Street.
Next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills, one cosponsored by you, and two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 600, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses by amending Section 9, 605, entitled Towing to clarify requirements for application of the rotational tow system.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3210 through 12 Arlington Street.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Also, next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer three bills, one resolution, one bill on your behalf, and one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by state road, Penny Pack Path, the Delaware River, and Bligh Street Extended.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to convey a parcel of land commonly known as 3500 East Arlington Street to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for further conveyance.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 16, 700, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Philadelphia Land Bank to exempt the land bank from certain municipal claims and charges.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the reappointment of Brian J. McCormick as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in the term ending November 16, 2021.
Thank you, and that was referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have two...
I have two non-privileged resolutions, one co-sponsored by Johnson, Parker, and Blackwell, and the other by Parker, Bass, and Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 2100 block of North 56th Street as Willard Smith Senior Way.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution adopting the report issued by Council Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform containing recommendations on how the city can minimize the amount of non-violent offenders who are incarcerated while awaiting trial.
And next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. Oh, Councilman, right. Chair, you got the councilman, can you? Thank you.
Yes, on behalf of Councilman Johnson, three privileged resolutions, one non-privileged resolution, and one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Section 3B of an ordinance approved March 1, 1963 as amended relating to agreements to administer employees' retirement benefits for certain quasi-public agencies.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Young Involved Philadelphia and congratulating the organization on the event of its 7th Annual State of Young Philly Week.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing Council's Legislative Oversight Committee and Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining costs, fees, and penalties incurred by individuals in the juvenile justice system and the impact thereof on families in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution congratulating, honoring, and recognizing former LaSalle University and Sacramento Kings forward Lionel "L Train" Simmons for his induction into the National Collegiate Basketball Hall of Fame.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three bills on behalf of the administration, one on your behalf, one on mine, one privileged resolution, and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance authorizing the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society to construct on and maintain pedestrian enhancement encroachments at 122 through 38 Wyoming Avenue. And an ordinance amending Bill Number 160170 approved June 2016 entitled an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years, 2017 through '22 inclusive, by adding revising and/or removing certain projects, amounts, and sources. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2017 from the general fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance amending Bill Number 160171 approved June 20, 2016 entitled an ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2017 capital budget by adding, revising, and/or removing certain projects, amounts, and sources. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 from the general fund from certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the grants revenue fund, the director of finance provision for other grants, to the general fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
Those bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing the heart-driven, impactful, and life-changing career of Judith Bernstein Baker in service to Philadelphia's vibrant community of immigrants and refugees.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration of these convey conditional fees simple titled to serve city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 19th and 23rd wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Also, next week's final passes calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills on your behalf and one privileged, again, one privileged resolution co-sponsored by councilmembers Squilla, Blackwell, Canones, Sanchez, Heenan, and Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance amending Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees' Retirement Code to create a new plan entitled Plan 16 for certain employees to expand the scope of DC plan to cover additional employees, to change contribution rates for certain employees, to amend various provisions relating to the deferred retirement option plan, and to make technical amendments.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the financing of the city of Philadelphia's affordable housing preservation programs.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings regarding the city's growing problem of damage to shared driveways and retaining walls, and the need for the city to develop a solution.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That will be on this week's final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, is it me or is it extremely quiet in here today? It's like, quiet. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Decker. Back to business. The chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one bill co-sponsored by yourself and Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Title 18 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commerce to require the Department of Finance or such other official as the mayor may designate to report to council certain aggregate information regarding tax benefits such as tax exemptions, abatements, and credits, and to report on assessments of the impact of such tax programs.
That will be referred to committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taltenberger.
Good morning, President. No bills, no resolutions today. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance legalizing existing building and bay encroachments at 110, 112, and 114 Olive Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing second and race streets to construct, own, and maintain various pedestrian enhancement encroachments at 205 Race Street.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 2476 Jasper Street and 2478 Jasper Street.
Next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 2511 Survivor Street.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two bills, one on your behalf, and two privileged resolutions. And may be heard on one of the bills and the privileged resolutions after they are read into the record.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And ordinance amending Section 9, 627 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Establishments on Residential Block Faces by lowering the penalty amount.
That bill will be referred to committee. Councilwoman, speak on this one. Okay. That bill will be referred to committee.
And ordinance amending Section 12, 1010 entitled Penalty of Chapter 12, 1000 entitled Parking Meter Regulations and Penalties of Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to allow parking in parking spaces governed by inoperable parking meters or parking payment centers and establishing a presumption of inoperability.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to explain that as a councilman at large, I have the opportunity to walk through all the various commercial corridors of Philadelphia. One of the things that I find common, no matter where we are in the city, is that the business owners on behalf of their customers complain about inoperable or broken parking meters. Typically, they are the metal meters, and a lot of times, one business owner told me that the meter in front of her store has been broken for the last 20 years. And she demonstrated to me that sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work. It isn't that it doesn't work at all. It is just that sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work. And I think almost every Philadelphian who drives has experienced coming up to a meter and it's broken, and what happens is you can't park there, and if you do, you get a ticket. I have introduced for the consideration of this council a ordinance that requires that once the defense of the meter is broken has been raised, well, first of all, if it's broken, you can park there for the allotted period of time. Second of all, if you get a ticket, you can raise the defense, and it is now incumbent on the parking authority or whomever to show that it is properly operable. And I think that is a way to get the entity in charge to begin to correct these broken meters as opposed to getting money for not fixing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming January 13, 2017, is Korean-American Day in the city of Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Council's Streets and Services Committee and Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings regarding the installation of electric vehicle parking spaces in Philadelphia.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And we will now move to our reports from committee. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which is referred Bill Number 160715 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, Amber Street, Lehigh Avenue, and Emerald Street. And Bill Number 160716 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14, 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Regulations by modifying certain standards for ground floor uses in the CMX 2 and CMX 2.5 districts. And Bill Number 160776 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, Oregon Avenue, 10th Street, and the Schuylkill Expressway, I-76. And Bill Number 160865 entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, 300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Administration and Procedures by modifying the public notice requirements and making related changes. And Bill Number 160869 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Lincoln Drive, Wissahicken Avenue, Schoolhouse Lane, the Oak Road, Midvale Avenue, Crescent Avenue, and Gypsy Lane, and to adopt the master plan for Philadelphia University and approving various construction projects pursuant to that plan. And Bill Number 160917 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Charles Street, Hunru Avenue, Marsden Street, Leverick Street, Cottage Street, Devereaux Avenue, Marsden Street, Benner Street, Dittman Street, Cheltenham Avenue, Harbison Avenue, Charles Street, Comley Street, Mulberry Street, Harbison Avenue, and Devereaux Avenue. And Bill Number 160918 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Charles Street, Harbison Avenue, and Cheltenham Avenue. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the seven bills that were just read into the record.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160715, 160716, 160776, 160865, 160869, 160917, and 160918. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill Number 160968, entitled an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property of the city of Philadelphia on behalf of the city of Philadelphia and in cooperation with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to undertake a project to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Philadelphia, authorizing and approving a project including the refunding of bonds issued to finance the new youth center facility, an amendment to an existing ground lease between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, an amendment to an existing prime lease between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and the assignment of such amendment to a trustee, and the obligation of the city of Philadelphia to pay rent under the prime lease as amended when due. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160968. After that vote, I'd like to be recognized for a moment.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160968. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a guest here from, is this Cameroon? And we, and we're who, Deputy Mayor of Duala, Cameroon, so we want to recognize him and thank him for being here. I also would like to ask for a special leave of absence and to be considered as voting aye on all bills and resolutions. Many of you may remember John Rifkin. Years ago, when we sold flowers downstairs, some of you may not remember, before it looked so great as it does now, we used to have John Rifkin sell flowers, and a gentleman named Wes Taylor was like a son to him. Well, his son died, and I've got to try to, funeral started at 11:00, but at least show my face to give him their respect.
Thank you, Councilwoman. These shall be granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation and issues a report to council pursuant to Resolution Number 160052.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number 160609, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 6, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Lead Paint Disclosure to require as a condition of licensing family-child daycare facilities built before March 1978 that such facilities be certified as lead-safe or lead-free, and amending Section B 425 of the Code entitled Family Child Daycare Facilities and Section F 409 of the Code entitled Family Child Daycare Facilities to make conforming changes. And Bill Number 160618 entitled an ordinance amending Section A 703.1 of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Special Certificate of Inspection to require certification of water quality as a condition of occupancy for buildings used for education. And Bill Number 160687 entitled an ordinance amending Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health to require disclosure of lead hazards, including lead service lines, and making technical changes. And Bill Number 160811 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 16, 300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Maintenance and Supervision by adding a new section requiring that all city buildings and facilities with bathrooms open to the public have baby diaper-changing stations, and require the installation of diaper-changing stations in connection with capital projects. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation, and the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to which is referred Resolution Number 160052 entitled the resolution authorizing the holding of public hearings pursuant to City Council's declaration of 2016 as the year to combat the heroin abuse epidemic in Philadelphia, to explore the serious effects that heroin abuse is having on our communities, and to and to develop a strategy with the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services to effectively address the heroin epidemic as an urgent local health priority. Respectfully reports that the Committee held hearings is authorized by Resolution Number 160052 on May 20 and November 16, 2016, and that the Committee issues to the council the attached report on the matters discussed at the hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160609, 160618, 160687, and 160811.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of Bills Number 160609, 160618, 160687, and 160811. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform issues an interim report pursuant to Resolution Number 160101.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform, to which is referred Resolution Number 160101, entitled "A Resolution Appointing Members to the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform Who Will Conduct Public Hearings Examining the Philadelphia Criminal Justice System for the Impact of Current Policies and Offer Recommended Strategies for Reform That Are in the Best Interest of Public Safety and the Public Good." Respectfully reports that the Committee held hearings is authorized by Resolution Number 160101 on August 1, September 12, and November 14, 2016, and that the Committee issues to the council the attached interim report entitled "A Shift From Reentry to Preentry" on the matters discussed at the hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The next order been is consideration of the calendar. I noted the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 160976, 160977, 160978, 160979, 160980, 160982, 160986, 160989, 160709A, 160329, and 160611. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar, we will have a public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested, it testifies on the bill and resolution on the final passes today. If you have not already done so, I'd ask that you please sign up to the table to my left. When it is your time to speak, you will be called by the Chief Clerk. You go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 160976, 160979, and 160980.
Good afternoon. I quote the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, is the right of the people to alter it or abolish it and institute new government. I quote, "is never the wrong time to do the right thing." Twenty-two years I have been without my home and private property, taken without due process or payment. I have notified all my government agents, agencies, and agents. Is this why the past election was such a stunt? Did some of the people finally stand up and say no to the elected monarchy? I make another official decree to defund and stop using the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, C. Comptroller's Office, District Attorney's Office, and Sheriff's Office, and to convene three separate grand juries to investigate illegal deed transfers and everything that brought about the theft of my home, 1038 West Wyoming, and possible misuse of hundreds of millions of taxpayer dollars. This government has been willful, arrogant, extraordinary, and egregious in their efforts to not pay me and to cover this matter up. It takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Anthony Gallagher, commenting on 160976.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. I'm Anthony Gallagher. I'm the Business Manager of Steinfried's Local 420. We represent 4,500 members in the surrounding county area of Philadelphia. I rise in support of this resolution because the RINs are taking away the capital necessity to produce jobs, especially in the refining area. Local 420 produces about 5.3 million man-hours. Of that 5.3 million man-hours, a million of that is based in oil refineries, which represents approximately $84 million in wages and benefits to my members, which supports the local economies, which supports our local communities. I rise because the jobs are necessary. As many of you do remember, we were at a crossroads, and we almost lost that refinery. I can assure you, as a member that was working down in the refineries, the devastation that I seen in my members' faces and the members that were working in them refineries was incredible. We are not only stewards of jobs, I can assure every member of this council, we are also stewards of the environment. I know the concerns that we have. I can assure you, when we are working in them places, not only as members of Steinfried's Local 420, but the building trades, we do it safe, we do it right, and we do it with concern of property, equipment, and people. That is our top priority. Safety, nothing, and I mean nothing, comes before the safety of our people and the communities we serve. So I rise, please. This resolution is very important. These RINs are taking away serious capital that could be used to put our members to work, put the building trades to work, and the members of the refineries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. We will now move to our calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the Title 160976.
A resolution urging President Obama and the United States Congress to require the United States Department of Environmental Protection to change the obligated party mechanism in the Renewable Fuel Standard Program from refiners and importers of gasoline and diesel to the companies who blend renewable fuels in order to avoid adverse economic impacts caused by the Renewable Identification Numbers Compliance Mechanism.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to say thank you for that public testimony or public comment, and I now move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor, ayes have it. And Resolution 160976 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160977.
A resolution adding Grace H. Daniels Way to the street signs on the 800 block of 800 block 46th Street between Parish and Westminster in honor of Grace Daniels, a mother in the West Philadelphia community and an advocate for helping others.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Resolution 160977 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160978.
A resolution adding Reverend William J. Shaw Way to the street signs on the 100 and 200 blocks of South 53rd Street between Chestnut and Wall Street in recognition of Reverend Shaw's 60 remarkable years of ministry and service to the West Philadelphia community.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160978 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160979.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees, simple totter, setting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 5th and 37th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Resolution 160979 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160980.
A resolution approving the ratification and First Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Brewery Town urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1408 through 24 North 31st Street, 1415 through 37 North 31st Street, 1421 through 27 North 32nd Street, including 3129 through 45 West Masters Street.
And one more time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenlee.
One more time, I move the adoption of the resolution, Mr. President.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160980 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160982.
A resolution calling on the Philadelphia Police Department and the Department of Commerce to develop a plan to equip every major commercial corridor within Philadelphia with surveillance cameras within the next three fiscal years.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160982 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160986.
A resolution also naming South 11th Street between Patterson Avenue and South Darian Street Ed Snyder Way to honor the memory of Ed Snyder and to recognize his many contributions to the City of Philadelphia.
And Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And Resolution 160986 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160989.
A resolution strongly urging the Department of Commerce's Office of Economic Opportunity to significantly hasten its production of the annual participation report, which is required to be provided to City Council and the mayor on or before November 1st of each year.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160989 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160709A.
And ordinance amending Chapter 17, 100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Procurement Contracts by further providing with respect to the local bidding preference, including but not limited to provisions concerning penalties, requirements necessary for certification and recertification, and further providing for the relationship between prime contractors and subcontractors.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell is voting aye. Councilman Dom. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Ayes are 15 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160329.
And ordinance renaming and designating Daisy Field as David Montgomery Field in the City of Philadelphia.
Two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell is voting aye. Councilman Dom. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Ayes are 15 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160611.
And ordinance officially naming and designating the park and playground area located on 61st Street and Baltimore Avenue in the City of Philadelphia as Robert Wilson III Park.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell is voting aye. Councilman Dom. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Omega Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on its 90th anniversary and celebrating the Omega Omega Chapter's history, accomplishments, and ongoing commitment of services to all mankind, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
For the pink and green ladies, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Joint Committees on Commerce and Economic Development and Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold public hearings to consider and make recommendations on how the City of Philadelphia should prepare to host America's 250th anniversary in 2026, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair one more time recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Young Involved Philadelphia and congratulating the organization on the event of its 7th Annual State of Young Philly Week, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Legislative Oversight Committee and Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings examining costs, fees, and penalties incurred by individuals in the juvenile justice system and the impact thereof on families in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating, honoring, and recognizing former LaSalle University and Sacramento Kings forward Lionel L. Train Simmons for his induction into the National Collegiate Basketball Hall of Fame, introduced by Councilman Johnson on behalf of Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the heart-driven, impactful, and life-changing career of Judith Bernstein Baker in service to Philadelphia's vibrant community of immigrants and refugees, introduced by Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Streets and Services to hold hearings regarding the city's growing problem of damage to shared driveways and retaining walls, and the need for the city to develop a solution, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming January 13, 2017, is Korean-American Day in the City of Philadelphia to celebrate and commemorate the proud heritage of Korean-Americans and their invaluable contributions to enhancing the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Streets and Services Committee and Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold hearings regarding the installation of electric vehicle parking spaces in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair one more time recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our panel for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Councilman Squilla who chairs the Streets and Services Committee and myself, I just wanted to explain that I introduced a resolution to hold a hearing because in two thousand seven, there was a bill passed in favor of and to support electrical, electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging stations. However, they weren't really being implemented until now, which is two thousand sixteen, and they may be done in a really wonderful way, I just don't know, but I have gotten complaints from folks because as I understand it and have looked into it, there's an application process that ultimately will cost at the end of the day, including the charging station, about four thousand dollars. And what the applicant receives is a parking space in front of their home where only electrical vehicles can park there, however, they cannot use your charging equipment. So if any other car parks in that space, they will be towed, they could be towed. Only other electrical vehicles can park there, and they can park there for three or four days, so you can't park in front of your space anyway. In two thousand seven, it, I, the technology was far slower than today, so today, electrical, electric vehicle can be charged halfway for twenty minutes and fully for about an hour and a half. And I think it would be a good idea just to look and see, is this process the best process given today's technology? And that's the reason for the hearing. On a different note, I'd just like to say that this is the third year of PHL Live, and we have done nine final shows, and tonight at Fire and Ice at three twelve Market Street, we're doing the DJ finals. Again, this is really about the creative economy. I was interviewing international DJ Casper a couple days ago. He's a DJ, born in North Philadelphia. He produced the music for the movie Deadpool. Gets a check every time they play that music. He's with Darkchild doing the movie for, the music for the TV series Empire. He's making a lot more money today than probably in any other profession that he would have pursued, and he loves being a DJ. The highest paid DJ for last year earned sixty-six million dollars. We have a lot of talented people. They need platforms and opportunities, and so I invite everyone to participate in the music economy and supporting our music economy, supporting the folks in our city, no matter their age or socioeconomic background, who have talent and want to pursue the opportunities. So on Thursday, December eighth, the day I think everybody in this chamber knows, at seven thirty, the doors will open at the Trocadero where we hold our award show, where for all ten genres, we bring up the finalists and announce the winner. They win a thousand dollars, free studio recording time, and other types of prizes, as well as the people's choice. And for this year, our co-hosts are Vassi, who is a seven-time multi-platinum recording artist, originally from Australia, and Keith from up the block, very funny comedian from Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for continuing to highlight the great artists in the city of Philadelphia. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me thank you for, well, I guess what would come first is that in the Army they teach you never volunteer. And there's a reason for that, because volunteers get put to work in a substantial way. But I really want to reverse that and thank you for getting me to volunteer on the Committee for Justice Reform. It has been worthwhile, and I hope it will be productive. We have produced a interim report, and Keira Gray, who is a co-chair that you appointed, wanted to title this report, "A Shift From Reentry To Pre-Entry," which when you addressed the committee at first, we wanted to figure out, it's easier to prevent people from getting in the pipeline than once they get in trying to bring them back into society. So we are spending a lot of our time on that. I want you to know that working with CJAB Criminal Justice Advisory Board, working with the Mayor's MacArthur Foundation, Judge Lerner and his staff, members on this committee are Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Blackwell has been at meetings, and Councilman Heenan has been at meetings to offer input to the document, interim document you see today. We started out, we had, I think, four major long hearings, starting with Councilman Johnson's gun violence resolution, where we heard passionate testimony from the victims of what occurs when these incidents happen throughout our neighborhoods. We discovered in our research that there are forty-eight zip codes in the city of Philadelphia. Eleven of them occupy eighty-seven percent of the inmates up on State Road. It is also not lost to us that in those eleven zip codes, where those populations come from, those are where most of the twenty-three schools we closed come from. And so if you can find what the causes are, if a kid can't read by the time they're four years old, up to par, we know how many cells to build by the time they're eighteen, you can reverse engineer some of the solutions which you've insisted upon. So this report talks about a couple of key things, Mr. President. The tenets of it are to initiate a reduction of the prisoner pipeline, strategies to prevent young people's involvement early in the criminal justice system, systematic change to reduce the population up on State Road, moving those inmates out, reducing recidivism by making improvements and enhancements to local reentry programs, and institute evidence-based programs that work. Find evidence-based programs that work. And that's going to be difficult because every program can make you feel good, but you have to know how much good costs and how to make these investments. You insisted that we do our work quickly because we have the budget process coming up, and if we're going to make substantial investments in criminal justice, we need to start that process now. So what were the three key things that are in this interim report? We did the report for the summer, was real easy, low-hanging fruit, increase jobs for young people, increase activities, watch out for hot spots. That was easy. What we want to do now is to pay attention to what many people who came in and testified before have reinforced through these hearings. One, we want to do a new risk assessment model. Just because a person has a bad day doesn't make them a bad person. We have to figure out who is a risk to themselves and the rest of the community and society, and we need to hold them. Those who are not a risk to themselves or some, we met with young people up in prison. A couple of them that were there because they could not afford a hundred dollars bail. We were paying a hundred and twenty-plus dollars a day to keep them there. Does not make sense. Second thing that we want to invest in is GPS technology, to be able to say, all right, we want you back among us, but we want to know where you are at nighttime when it's going down in the DM. So we are going to invest in that to make sure we know that you're where you cannot create harm for yourself and others. The third, we got from Councilwoman Blackwell, day reporting centers. Day reporting centers where, as opposed to going to jail, you can be among the community, paying back the community by cleaning lots or removing graffiti. No, we're not talking about chain gangs, but what we are talking about is going back to the community you took from and giving something back. And then during the day, let's work on your issues. If it's drug addiction, if it's anger management, if it's a lack of education or trade, let's work on that. And then at night, you go home to your family, hopefully, but you go home. You don't have to go home, but you do have to get out of here. So at the end of the day, we want to shift from reentry to preentry, which is prevention. We've heard a lot of good testimony from a lot of good people, and we're taking it to heart, and I want to thank you again for emphasizing that we put our money where our mouth is, that if we are really trying to change this paradigm, then we have an opportunity to do it, and we have it within our means to get it done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Councilman, for your continued good work, and Councilman Johnson and Heenan, all the members who have worked on this very important issue. Front side is always better than backside. Thank you for your continued support. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'll be quick. I wanted to just say that, like many Philadelphians across the city and people across the country, I'm coming to terms with an election that will likely see sweeping changes in policies and funding for many of the programs and issues that I and many others in this council chambers hold dear. That includes things like criminal justice, immigrant rights, poverty issues, housing, the environment, healthcare, and public education. To that end, I think that there are just, you know, two very brief comments that I wanted to say. First, I stand by the people's right to dissent and protest, to march, and to speak their minds about what the issues are that are before them. Well, first and foremost, because it's constitutional right protected and hallowed within our democracy. But second, because there have been troubling remarks made at the national level and on other spaces by those who would quash or meet dissent with state violence and force, it does not serve our body politic. I don't think anybody in this chambers believes that it is possible to be seen in our city and in our times, but I think more than ever, it is important to make that commitment as we face some of the times ahead. And I'm incredibly grateful to have honored Guardian Civic League here in these chambers today, and to thank our Civil Affairs Department. I've been on the outside doing a lot of the rallying and protesting in my day, and I know that our Civil Affairs Department and our Police Department are going to be committed to seeing a peaceful allowance of public dissent and protest in the days to come. And second, I mean, I don't, I think it's important for us to say something about the hate crimes that are cropping up all over our city and over our country. Dozens in Philadelphia, including my alma mater at the University of Pennsylvania, hundreds across the country, and those are just the ones that have been reported. You know, there's, there's very little to say about how we're going to confront an era in which hate crimes becomes part of our, becomes part of the conversation, but I am confident that this city will do so and that we have to, in order to do that, pay more attention, more than ever, to the needs and experiences of communities who walk through our city that may experience things that are far different from, from ones that we can imagine. That more and most especially includes our most vulnerable communities, our LGBT communities, our young people of color, our black students in particular, our LGBTQ communities, immigrants, Muslims, women. My heart breaks for the struggles that some of our communities are going to face in the times to come, and that I want them to know that we'll be there in solidarity with them, that we'll be listening, that we'll defend their rights at every point, will resist when necessary. And finally, I just want to really state with pride my role and my ability to stand with my colleagues here in City Council. I ran for City Council because I believed in the power of municipalities to effect meaningful change. I believe still, probably now more than ever, that cities can lead, in fact, we must lead in these times, that we can establish standards and principles that the rest of the country can look to for hope and possibility as we confront some, some challenging times ahead. I know many of us in this room are going to be challenged to rethink or maybe walk back on some of the values that we've held dear. I think those are going to be hard and challenging conversations, but as we face some of those ahead, I want to know that I've never been prouder to be part of a city council that has never hesitated to stand up on a whole host of rights and responsibilities and to further a progressive movement, not only in our city but for this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. In nineteen sixty-four, the U.S. Surgeon General released a report on cigarettes that forever changed how America dealt with cigarettes, its cause for cancer, and how we've treated that since then. This morning, the Surgeon General released a report, a very timely one, that talks about the addiction and misuse and abuse of chemical substance. Twenty million people suffer some sort of substance disorder. It causes the United States four hundred and twenty billion dollars a year in healthcare costs, lost economic productivity, and of course, the cost of criminal justice, which my colleague referenced. All of you saw Al Loubrano's Inquirer cover story this Saturday, and unfortunately, this is just the surface. There will be many, many more articles to come. El Campamento, in the Air Bridge, as troubling as it is, only begins to scratch the surface. The members of Air Bridge only represent less than twenty percent of the daily users and visitors to El Campamento and in that area. The federal government has called it a national crisis. Governor Wolf and his health secretary have talked about it. Councilman O'Here led a series of discussions and today submitted to this council, the report and the findings of many of his town halls. Councilman Squilla, who like me, has many of these recovery houses in this district, and Councilman Dom, who's been very, very supportive and steadfast in helping me bring to light this incredible problem, which is a perfect storm that has been created in this open heroin market that we have in Cessington. All is not grim. There are many stakeholders on the ground, impact services, New Cessington CDC, Prevention Point, with this needle exchange program that no matter how controversial, has really led to some positive outcomes, OSAT and others. To its credit, this new administration, through a task force led by the Managing Director's Office with all department heads, the Streets Department has put in skin in the game, LNI, the Office of Homeland Services, and the Office of Behavioral Health. But the acknowledgement and the public statements in the article this Sunday are extremely troubling. Many of you know during council budget hearings, I sound like a broken record all the time, I said, and it's a song I'm going to continue to play, have heard me talk about the recovery houses and the lack of accountability by our mental health providers and their relationship with the, with the recovery houses. And the public acknowledgement that some of those providers pay cash directly to these recovery house operators, or what I call human traffickers, is unacceptable. In my district, I have worked with the DEA and federal, the federal government to close some of these mental health providers, but more needs to be done. I will continue to urge the administration, Councilman Dom and I, who've met with Conrel and CSX around this El Campamento, this is unacceptable. The fact that CSX and Conrel did make some investments in this area because they needed to increase the traffic flow of their trains bringing chemicals through this district, but unwilling to own the problem that they have created there is also unacceptable. So I'm going to continue to push the administration to declare this area a healthcare crisis, and for us to begin to clean the aesthetics, only the aesthetics of what's going on, because yet, we have yet to appropriately fund what a coalition of folks called the Cessington Council Coalition has created, which is a short-term plan that can lead to a long-term strategy about how we deal with what everybody knows is a national crisis. I want to thank the reporters who are going to stay on this. Mike Newell, who put it best this on Wednesday's article, where he said, "Now everybody knows, and there's no more deniability on this." So the time for action is now. Let us hope that the Surgeon General report continues to support the notion that this is everyone's problem. Opium abuse is something that we are going to have to deal with for many years to come, but nowhere, nowhere, particularly in a city like Philadelphia, should a perfect storm, as the one created in Cessington, should be allowed to continue to flourish. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Briefly, I just wanted to mention that there was a great article today in the Inquirer showing about, the Pew report, how that Philadelphia is catching up, and the differences between doing business in the suburbs and doing business in the city has dramatically changed, and the city of Philadelphia is climbing up. And I just hope this is a message to suburban companies that are, have not come to Philadelphia yet, that need to take a look at our city, because we're doing some great things here, and we should applaud all of us here, and even the people who were before us ten years and twenty years ago who changed these policies. I thank them because we're making great strides. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches today, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. We want to give everyone a happy holiday, and council therefore will stand adjourned until Thursday, December first, two thousand sixteen, at ten a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. The councils stand adjourned. Thank you. It's been moved in property second. The council will stand adjourned until Thursday, December 1st, 2016, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Thank you all very much.